All right, well, it's nine o'clock. Why don't we go ahead and get started? Everyone's all right with that?
You hear the chair.
There you go. Budget matters.
State of the land. United States of America. Two hundred and fifty. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everyone. Okay, I believe everyone has had a chance to look over the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve them? Motion, Paul?
I can do that.
Thanks. Any discussion, questions, changes? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, excellent, moving on. We have resolutions of the day, starting with the budget mod proportion in person. Dave, you want to give us just a quick one on that?
Yes. Over the past few years, we have been fortunate to get a little bit of extra funding from Senator Ritchie. She secured money in the state budget for the communities within her district that have fishing as a pretty regular activity. And we've spent the, we've done what we need to do to secure that money. And when I did this year's budget, I wasn't sure that we'd be prepared to apply for each of those three reimbursements. So I'm asking to just increase the lines that are associated with those funds because we want to apply for all three. We've already applied for two, and we want to apply for the third. So it's money that we've spent in the past years, and now we're just trying to get it back into the marketing line.
All right, I'll vote for motion. Thank you, second? All right, any discussion, any questions today? If not, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to the next one. Budget mod capital project Route 176, Howard Road, Volney Sewer District. Dave, you want to?
Yeah, this is a little confusing. So if you recall, last year, you increased the capital project to about $3 million so that we could demonstrate to the state and other people that we're applying to grants for, that the project had our full support. A lot of times, you might be excluded from a grant if the grantor felt that you didn't have the funds to do the project. In this case, let's say a $3 million project, and we're asking somebody for $100,000. And they're like, "Well, if I give $100,000, how are you going to do a $3 million project?" So you kind of had to demonstrate that the money was there, and we were looking to help offset it. So we're going to apply for those funds to come in for the project. And rather than readjust the capital project down now, I talked to Phil and Steve for some time about this. What we're proposing is just increase the budget line to reflect the grant monies that come in. And then when the project's all done, whatever is left is all going to go back to ca, what is it?
Fund balance.
Fund balance. So rather than move the project down and then find out, "Oh gee, we're off by $50,000 or whatever," later, we'll wait till all bills are paid, and then move on.
Okay, great, I'll take a motion. Paul, can I second? No, thank you. All right, for discussion, do we have any questions? Great.
No, this is totally normal procedure in the budgetary.
Yeah, we can, yeah, because what we're doing, this is really like part one of a two-part resolution. As Dave said, we're accepting the grant money, increasing the authorization. And if we knew that the, you know, very often, we may receive grant monies after the fact. This is before the fact. So since it's before the fact, we're going to have bids back. We don't know the actual to the benefit cost. We don't want to move any money back into fund balance yet. I mean, we want to know what the true cost of the project is, and then we'll move it back.
Can't ask for a project, or that's what this is. It's an escrow.
Same thing, it's not an escrow, but that's what a, in essence, what a capital project does. You're market for that project, can't use anything else. And then anything left over goes back into the funds that it came from.
Dave, with the project, what was our original estimate for the total cost of the project?
Well, the original estimate, again, it was in 2009, was, I think, 2.874 or something like that. And we had the numbers reevaluated last year, and it came to 2.9 something. So we've always just kind of used that $3 million rounded up number. Of that, we've spent probably half a million over the last 10 years in soft costs, creating the district, doing the engineering, drawings, and all that. A lot of the upfront soft work is done. Putting the bid package together right now, and then going out for the actual construction and construction management prices.
Is there any concern that having that large amount of money in a publicly available fund will increase the bids that we're going to receive back with the knowledge of the money that's sitting waiting to pay for it?
I don't think so. It's not like the regular practice for somebody to go and say, "Well, let's go find the capital fund that is set up to establish this." Unless Danny makes it the top of the whole pay story. It's not going to be, you know, to the attention of most people. And quite frankly, if the numbers come back that are higher than what we've estimated, there'd be some questions from the Environmental Facilities Corporation, which is one of our partners in this project, about where, why are these costs so disproportionate to the engineering analysis that you had done just one year ago? And personally, I would say if they came back severely disproportionate, that we would just can't, you know, rebid later or cancel the bid.
Sure.
We don't have to accept a price that we don't think is appropriate.
And then just, because I'm the first one to see one like this. So we created the account for $3 million for this project to be paid out of. We are now putting an extra million and a half into it. So essentially, we have $4.5 million in that account. We've spent some additionally already of those costs, so really.
Not additionally, part of the three.
Right, right. So assuming the total project was going to be $3 million, we've already spent a half million towards that three?
Yes.
From what we understand. So we should have money left over. Your point was, this is the first half. This is the second resolution is going to put that money back into fund balance.
Right.
This would save us, you know, if we overspend by $300, another resolution to book the money out of fund balance back in again. It's more of a accounting kind of a saving time.
Yeah, so if you look at the total of these numbers that we're proposing to increase it by, in pretty much if the project comes in at $3 million range, that's the number that's going to go back into our fund balance to reimburse us for the work that we did. We just don't know what that final number is going to be, and we're suggesting it makes sense to do it when we do know.
Excellent, okay, any other questions?
How much did the county actually, are we, is it costing us?
So in 2009, we allocated $750,000 to form the district and do engineering studies. And last year, we spent a little bit more of that money to update the numbers and the drawings and the bid documents. So we've spent not quite half a million right now. We believe, based on the estimates that were done last year, that the project will cost about 2.5 more to complete. So this almost one and a half million will be reimbursed to us at the end. So you put in three, and you get one and a half back. Approximate cost to the county is about one and a half.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. Thank you.
Hey, did you?
Yeah, this is in an interest-bearing account, where you use it.
Well, it's in a, yeah, it, the, the, it can earn interest. The interest is allocated towards the reserve or the fund balance, wherever the money came from. It's not, I don't think it's allocated towards the project. It's tracked, it's tracked in the source money. Because really, you know, you have a reserve fund. Instead of capital projects, those are just sub-accounts within that fund. Money still technically sits in that, that is in.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Good, thank you. All right, so resolution three, amend the agricultural district plan boundaries by permitting additional areas of inclusion pursuant to the plot. This is our annual resolution to add people during the open window, correct? Dave, is there any more to that?
No, that's it. It's a process that we go through every year. I think there's about seven or eight that we reviewed last week. That's our land protection board meeting, four. It's like, let me go back to that resolution. There were a few we talked about that would be on these four.
These are the only four that they approved?
Yes.
Now, could anybody add after this point? Once we vote, that's it for the year, correct? They can't come in later?
There is another process to be included in the ag district, but this is the kind of annual opportunity. So if there are the people practicing the other one, they usually wait till the end of the year.
Take a motion? A second? Any additional discussion?
This, is there, I know, just for significant expectation and reduction of subselling for these properties?
This is not the process whereby they get the tax adjustment.
Makes them eligible, all right.
This makes them eligible to go through that process. But what this does is gives them some protection against a neighbor who decides to, or a person who decides to buy a property next door and build a house, and complain about the odors. A guy's like, "Well, I have a farm. I've always had a farm. It's in an agricultural district. How did you not know that before you bought the property and built the house?"
It doesn't just pertain to farms. It pertains to any production in agriculture.
That's right.
Because we had a greenhouse across the road. We had a neighbor move in. And he had just moved here. I saw him one day, and I said, "How many acres you got?" And I think he said 58 or something like that. I said, "Perfect, it's going to take you some time, but we're going to show her off." And that's what we did.
Yeah.
You know, it takes time for the process to go through, and you know what I'm talking about. And then she moved out, you know what I mean?
And sometimes, these people aren't even in the ag business themselves, but maybe they own a lot of land, and they're leasing it to someone to grow corn or hay, or some other cash crop. Or they can be just having a woodlot on the property. But the Farming Protection Board looks at the applications. For example, I don't know if you're familiar with, if you go out 104 towards Scriba, and there's a, there's a J and A mechanical is out that way, and there's a road that goes off to the left there, off to the right. And there's a car wash, an abandoned gas station that's a used car lot now. Well, right by that car wash, on that road that goes to the right, there's a house, and a barn, and a bunch of junk cars, and refrigerators, and all kinds of things hanging on the property. That guy applied to be in the ag district last year because he had two chickens and a goat, and said he was an agricultural producer. But really, he wanted to be able to just leave that junk on his property. If you're an agricultural producer, and you're in agricultural district, and you have a baler, and an old tractor, and some other agriculture-related equipment on your property, it's assumed that that has some value to you, whether it's spare parts or whatever. But people can't come over and say, "Hey, you run a junkyard." He's like, "No, I'm running a farm, and this is my equipment that I use." So this guy wanted to protect his junkyard, basically, by raising a couple chickens and a goat, trying to get in the ag district. So they look at it pretty closely, and sometimes they tell people no.
Isn't there an expected revenue amount that you're supposed to threshold?
There's a form, and there's questions on there about revenue. And it's not a really high number, because, for example, if you're just leasing 20 acres to somebody to grow hay, you're not getting a lot of revenue from that. But it's being used for legitimate agricultural purpose. I think.
Keep your brush down, too.
In the other, yes, in the other process where they're looking for the tax adjustment, that's where those numbers come into play more.
Thanks.
And Joe's office is involved in part of that as well.
It's a $10,000.
Yeah, that's the number I thought.
$10,000 requirement, requirement to be in the ag value assessment. And it actually goes up if you have, that's what the minimum acreage of 10 acres. If you have, or I'm sorry, 7 acres, if you have less than that, the number actually goes up from there.
Thanks.
But I believe it isn't necessarily the land owner. Let's say that he rents land to a farmer. As long as that farmer generates $10,000, then his land qualifies because he's generating it from that land and along with his other, correct?
Correct. It just has to be a minimum of a 7-acre agricultural operation, tillable land, and that run to make acreage.
And what I've done in the past is worked that into land rent, where I could save the money under taxes that didn't cost me so much to rent it. And then I had, thing of it is, is it's seven years, or seven years, or 10 years?
I think it's five, or is that?
Let's say the renters gets his tax exemption. Two years later, he has a developer come in and buy it. He's got to pay back the other, the rest of it.
Okay, great, any other questions? Good discussion, thank you, everyone. All right, call for a vote, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Great, good. And then lastly, for resolutions, we have the resolution urging the International Joint Commission to maximize the Lake Ontario-St. Lawrence River Outflow for event potential flooding in 2019. I'm sure you all remember, we had high flooding a couple years ago, two years ago?
Twenty seventeen, yep.
Seventeen. And we passed a few of these styled resolutions, kind of the cheeky fist, and "Come on, do what we ask." This is another one of those, Dave, you want to?
Yeah, this year has potential to be even worse because we're more than a foot higher than the normal for February. And so that doesn't account for spring thaw and spring precipitation. March can be rainy, if you think back about your last few years in March. And then we've got some pretty good snow, especially in the Sanon River corridor, that watershed. So there's people up there that are very concerned about it. There's also a concern that right now, there's four Americans and four Canadians on the commission. And the terms for the Canadians have expired, and there's no new members that have been appointed. So asking the commission to take an action right now is somewhat problematic because there's not one that's properly formed. So this, I'm not sure that we've identified any Canadian elected officials on here, but perhaps we want to amend the resolution to include the premiers and the Canadian provinces that are affected as well.
We need to, do anything emotional amended at this point? Or can we just go with what the amended one would be?
No, you shouldn't amend it if you want to include Canadian.
I think that's a great idea. I'd like to make that motion.
One second.
Great, everyone in favor for that amendment?
Aye.
Favor, yes, aye? Okay, great, thanks, Dave.
To go along, I'd add to what Dave was saying. That's, since there are appointments to the IGC pending, actually, from both sides of the border, this is why we are also sending this, we're directing this towards the St. Lawrence, the Ontario-St. Lawrence River Board of Control. Because that's the sub-body of the IGC that actually controls the outflows. In terms of the American appointments to the IGC, I've been in touch with Schumer's office. The response I got back is that it's just going, the appointment process, federal appointment process is very slow. But the good news is that there are no senators holding up these names for any particular reason. It's just in its sole process. So we did bring it to their attention. Schumer, Gillibrand, CATCO, many of the federal representatives have been writing to the IGC, also letters very similar to this, also urging that they maximize these outflows. So we can add, we can add to this the Canadian, is it prime minister they have, the premier?
Yeah, I can get you the names.
We'll get the names and the address, and we'll add that to it, if that's what they, what you're going to do.
Another thing to keep in mind about the urgency of this is that I believe it takes, at the maximum capacity for Moses Saunders' dad, damn, it takes about a week to drop the lake in itch. And so, you know, acting now is very, very important because once we get into the spring thaw, it's going to be even more problematic. And throw in a windstorm like we had last week, and, you know, forget it.
Dave, any questions? Well, it's actually, I'll take them up. So we did, let's take a motion, I'll vote for a motion on this amended resolution. Paul? Thank you. Okay, discussion?
Should we say something in the resolution regarding what Dave brought up? That we don't, they don't even have a full board? And that, so this is mute, that we can't even move ahead? Even if everybody was for it, they can't even vote on it? Is that correct, what you're saying?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't confuse two issues. We've directed this also to the St. Lawrence River Board of Control. And I don't think, they don't have absences that I, vacancies that I know.
Okay.
I think we're covered there. If it goes a while longer, and there's no appointments to IGC that suffer whatever resolution. I need my advice, but you do what you want.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that perhaps those that would move this aren't even aware of the vacancies. And like, oh, and it's a day late, dollar short, that's all.
I think what we can check, though, and I'll talk to Rich about this, I'd like to ensure that there isn't language that says the River Board of Control only operates under orders from the IGC. Because if that's the case, then it's more important to get the IGC properly formed. So if they can tell the board of control what to do.
Right, correct.
Pretty great, any other discussion? No? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you. So we'll jump into, oh, we have to put this in person advisory council. Sorry about that. The names are probably mostly familiar. I don't know if everybody has any chance to look it over here, but I would, let's look for a motion. A motion for this? Look for a motion?
Yeah.
Thank you, Roy, second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion about the names on this list? Many are reappointments, I believe, the vast majority are reappointments.
Very much. Jan, do you have anything you want to add about them?
Most of them are reappointments. There are a few new members that we reached out to organizations to try to make sure that if someone wasn't represented, that we had someone from that organization represented. So we also look at people's attendance records, and we'll see if they're already reappointments.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, then I would vote for a vote, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Great, thank you. All right, let's do a quick, Joe, would you like to give us an update there, sir? I'll see.
Yes, absolutely. We, we do have, just one update would be that we do have our annual report almost completed. Should be completed and sent out by, I would say, you know, a week or so. So I'll get that to Mary Compon, and that can be, go towards the email distribution. So all legislators and some department heads will get that. We'll just highlight some of our programs and activities from last year. This year's plans will be, you know, very, very similar when you do review that. So if you have any questions, please, you know, feel free to contact us. And we have to explain those further.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions, Joe?
So a couple things. We just got our visitor guide back from the printer in the last few weeks. So I brought a few copies if you'd like it. Again, that was the first major project that we did with our newest hire. It saved us a lot of money on the design side. Took a little bit longer than we wanted, but we're pretty excited about it. You did a nice job, and we were able to print more copies.
It's a beautiful, beautiful production. I was very impressed.
I'd also like to ask for your permission to have a public hearing at the April legislative meeting. This will be for the purpose of discussing community development plot grants, projects that we're finalizing the details of now. So I can't tell you exactly the amount of money we're going to ask for and the specific purpose, but it's likely to be housing-related. In the past, we've done things like energy efficiency for income-eligible seniors and things. You have to fit into the little shoebox that CDBG provides. And if you can meet the demographic qualifications for those funds, then you'd have a competitive application. So what we're finalizing the details now about, do we have a good project that will be competitive? Because we don't want to just write an application that is going to get tossed out because we didn't do our homework on fun, so.
Do you need a resolution scheduled on the public hearing?
I'd like to have a resolution at the March meeting that will schedule a public hearing, and that will have the details in it of what we're applying for.
Special meeting?
It requires this committee to go, to have a resolution scheduled on the public hearing.
Can we vote, can we vote with that without seeing the details? Do we need to wait and do it before the lodge meeting? Or is it okay to do it without that?
It's up to you, but it's scheduling a public hearing is a template for a resolution.
Doesn't obligate you to anything, it just holds a spot on the April agenda for us to come in. CDBG requires specifically that you have a public hearing held before your elected body, and the public has to listen to it. So there's no, we're not obligating any funds. We're not making any commitments on behalf of the county.
I'm all right. Are we okay to vote on that without having it here?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion that you just discussed. A second? A second, I can make the motion.
Chairman, you can do that.
Any discussion about what was just discussed? And we're going to obviously all see this, and we'll have an opportunity to vote for it at the, at the March meeting.
You'll see it before the meeting.
Which would then set the meeting for April's meeting. Okay, all in favor?
We'll have the mail to the committee well before the meeting.
All right, any, any opposed? Yeah, great, thank you, I appreciate that. Thanks, Dave. I was going to say, it's exciting to see these, these grant opportunities and see these funds potentially coming into the county when you just got the folks who needed it. So thank you for that.
We had a nice media visit over the weekend. Jan spent the time in the Sanon River corridor with some Canadian writers and a representative from a media company that we work with. All females, I believe, so it's nice to have some, some folks in that gender to experience what we have here, and then go share it with their peers. So I don't know, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, it was part of a regional tour. That from time to time, we work with other regional counties and sections of the world. So these were two writers from the Ottawa area, and a marketing person from Break the Ice Media, which is a company located in Manchester. And first, they went to Cortland County. They did some downhill skiing there. Then next day, they went to Kingville County and visited some lineries and museums. And then we had them Sunday, so they started out early on the Sanon River at Doubleton Sanon Run. We had a guide work with them, and they spent a few hours there fishing. We went to lunch to Selkirk Shore State Park so they could see the lake. Then we went up to Sanon River Falls, and then after that, we had dinner, and they stayed at the tailwater. So they had a great experience. They really enjoyed the solitude of the river. And also, the guide was very patient with them. We very much. We very much appreciated that. So it went well. Yeah, I'd like to have them back in the summer actually because they didn't really, we talked a lot about the history of the area and the amenities that we have in the Oswego area and other parts of the county. But they didn't really have time to experience that. So we're going to try to set up something again in the summer.
Do they have some sort of, do they have a television show that comes out about this? Is there a newsprint or?
One is, yeah, one is a print magazine and she also blogs and the other one is a blogger. So they have different types of audiences. They're both really geared towards families, women being able to do things, you know. So it'll be interesting to see what comes out. They've already posted a lot of what they were here.
What does your process then from the county side when these kind of things come out? They share it on Facebook. Are they?
Yeah, David Owens was also with them and he was sharing stuff on Instagram throughout the day. And we shared on Facebook. And then the media company that we worked with also will be tracking when those things are published. Plus we have a media monitoring service that helps pick up on those social media posts as well.
That's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Speaking of media, the windstorm that drove ice along the shorelines of Lake Ontario and the eastern shore, a lot of houses, you may have seen pictures being encased. Might not have been our most productive visitation media, but that information went viral. It was seen around the world. Some stations in Ireland and England and other places picked up from the local news. It was picked up by Fox, CNN and several others. So we were counting this infamous, I guess. As a result of that, but just an example of the damage that high water can cause. We also have another media project that we do, typically we do every two years, a project with a TV station in the Scranton Wilkes-Barre area. There's a show on WNEP TV called Pennsylvania Outdoor Life. And the guy that hosts that talks about a lot of things to do in Pennsylvania, but quarterly he also goes to neighboring states and talks about things that people in Pennsylvania might be interested in doing. And for several years, he's come here every two years. And we do a two-day fishing trip for him and some guests who are successful bidders at their muscular dystrophy banquet. So we, sorry about that.
Good thing too.
I didn't take care of that. So we put a package together that includes a charter captain providing an afternoon fishing trip, lodging for the night, which may or may not be provided by the charter captain. And then another fishing trip in the next morning and a dinner the night in between. The only thing the county's responsible for is the dinner. The rest is donated. And then they take that package, go to this muscular dystrophy banquet and put it up for auction. And the last two auctions, they've raised over $3,000 for that package. So it gets a lot of publicity in the Scranton Wilkes-Barre area, which is really good target for us. We get a lot of visitors from there. And they film both of those fishing trips and make a show, a half hour show out of each. So for the cost of the dinner, we get two half hour shows and really high targeted market for us. And we're excited because normally it's only every other year. And he called the other day and said, I know you did it last year, but could you do it again this year? And we said, sure. So I'll take, I'll take the TV shows for 400 bucks any day.
And if you were to do Taco Bell, it'd be cheaper.
Yeah, they're great.
Crazy. Yeah, that's great news.
Well, nice thing is that the people who are buying this, you know, are in that market of having a good amount of disposable income. And they come back with a great experience. They talk to all of those other peers. And it's just probably the most cost effective advertising we do. So to be able to do it two years in a row instead of every other is great for us.
Are there any other areas where we think maybe that we could market that to other auctions for nonprofits or for benefits? I mean, it's a cool thing and maybe other folks would want to do it as well.
Yeah, you need somebody like this producer who's connected to that organization and passionate because, you know, he's a guy that really makes it work there and markets it ahead of time and pushes people to the auction. It's a good system. I'd love to be able to.
Cool. Anything else, Steve?
Just completed, I think maybe we have one show left. This is the show season.
Yeah, we have Saratoga, St. Patrick's Day weekend, and then the Ottawa show is the last weekend in March. And that's, those are both shows that our staff is directly out there working with potential visitors. And they're both relatively new shows for us, but they're both, we get a lot of the interest. With Ottawa one, it's a national, the government, you know, that gets behind that. So it's really fine quality show with representatives from all around the world really. But for us, there's several other counties in the region that go. So it gives those people know that if they're coming down to 81 corridor to go to Florida or do something else, we have a lot right here that they can stop off, go to Syracuse, go cross country skiing. Or, you know, there's all the different amenities that we have. So that's a really good show for us. And then the Saratoga one is, this will be the second or third year that we've done that one. And again, it's a really great market for us. That was a lot of paddling, camping, hiking, outdoor recreation. So we have a lot of assets also to tell them about. Those are the two big ones coming up next.
All right, cool.
Jan or Dave, when we get, you know, some of us don't follow Facebook all the time. So when we get these bloggers and writers and stories, can we, can we get some kind of a notice of? You know, I mean, Tourism Advisory Council, they have a pile of, a stack of stuff that goes with their, you know, monthly, monthly meetings that show, you know, talks about that stuff. But if we could just get a, you know, just an email that here's some, where's there's some locations.
Sure.
Some of the stories that are on, have an update or not necessarily about the Facebook posts, but maybe the biggest ones or.
We could also, if you so desire, we could give you the media package that we give to Tourism Advisory Council. It's not, not a big deal.
Is that the one that you do that to them or that?
The staff puts together the list of clippings and things like that.
Oh, probably, yeah.
Yeah, I'd love to see that.
Just, I mean, just as an email.
Yeah.
That would be very good.
Yeah, we can do that. It's scanned in and sent as a PDF to the council.
And because if, if we're not on that committee, I don't think we get the, all that information, do we?
Yeah.
You shouldn't be getting the agendas and the meeting announcements, but I'm not sure.
All legislators?
This committee does.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, I'm not sure about the package.
Okay, so then we're really already getting them. They're just.
Well, you're getting notice of the meeting and the topics to be discussed, but you're probably not getting the whole package that contains the media clippings and things like that. If you'd like it, we can just add that to your notice that you're already getting.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
It's kind of like what we get from Treadwell and get all the clippings in the back. I find those fascinating because I may have missed them and there's always more information. So that'd be nice.
I always miss them. Easy to do.
The fact that you're doing shows reminds me of the New York State Agriculture Society that meets in January every year. And this year was the first time that I saw a table from, I think it was like Wyoming County, that they brought tourism information and everything and everybody was fascinated with it. So I was kind of like then, of course I forgot. And now when you say that, if we could schedule to have some, you know, some kind of a presence there to talk about Oswego County and all the things that we do have. It's really, there's probably 500 people at least that attend that. It's a two day event. And they have a trade showroom and we have all different organizations there.
Where's it held?
It's right in Liverpool.
Okay.
So that's nice. It's pretty good.
Just notify us about the dates and put us, get us on the email list for whoever organizes it.
Yeah.
As long as it doesn't conflict with another show that we've always done for tourism purposes. Because we only have, well, I guess we have a couple of different booths that we could use. We don't have to use the main, the main piece.
It's always like the first or the second Thursday in January.
Oh, Thursday? That should conflict because most of the trade consumer shows are Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
This would be a Wednesday, this would be a Thursday. I would like to report on the Transportation Committee. It was our first organized, the reorganization of the committee and I thought it was a very, very good meeting. Our, we have full table, excuse me, we had a full table of a lot of different organizations. And we're very task oriented. We were able to get things out of, Roy was able to bring some questions that needed to be answered. And Stacy is getting those questions out. We're gathering the information. We're redoing the plan. And once that plan gets going, we can RFP for Mobility Manager. There's a lot of action and I'm really quite excited about what we did. I really, I really do. I really see that it's moving forward. And there's so many good things out there for transportation that the more meetings I go to, I find out about like this Goodwill Garage that I just find is fascinating. What it is, is they're trying, they've got a warehouse up in Bosie's up in Mexico that has been cleaned out. And they're going to have, the local dealers will be donating cars. And then the kids from Bosie's fix the cars. And then we're able to find people that need to have a car to get to education or work. It is just some fascinating things out there that we're able to help so many people. And transportation is at the core of a lot of the poverty issues that we have. And if we can get that transportation going, I think we've gone a long way. Did you want to add anything, Roy?
Well, yeah, I, the, just so you're all aware, I think, because the transportation piece goes through our committee here and we really don't, we haven't been able to move the ball on this at all for a long time. We're trying to, you know, the problem with the system is once Medicaid transportation was taken, the, the, the district, or.
Dispatching.
The dispatch for that was taken away from the county, even though Dave wrote letters to tell the state not to do that. It goes through a central organization now. And once those people were taken off of our buses, our ridership went down. The efficiency of that system's gone down for the state. It costs more money. Makes no sense, but they've still kept, keep doing it. And it's, what it's done is it's put our, because our local OPT transportation system is based on ridership. With ridership going down, the funding is going down. So we're in a, we're in a debt spiral on where we're getting this. Plus our system doesn't work for people trying to get to and from businesses. So what we're trying to do, you know, basically the questions we're trying to ask from the get go are to list all the agencies and all the funding. Where does it come from? And what part of the system is it supposed to go to? List all the agencies involved that have any administration of those. Break out the parts that are grants versus volunteers. Because there's, you know, we've got opposite, we've got federal money, we've got state money, we've got off staging money. We've got grants, we've got, you know, call and ride, we've got regular routes. And, you know, we got central and it's been, the whole thing's been a mess. So we want to also see, hopefully Dave's going to be able to help us map the routes. So we can take a look at maybe reorganizing what we already have to do, to do better routes. And then, of course, we also have multiple dispatch systems for each. There's, there's Medicaid for the state. We have a local dispatch at Catholic Charities for some portion of the system. And then apparently there's some other dispatch too for some other parts. So we're going to try, what they have up in Watertown is a volunteer transportation program. And apparently it works really well. People actually get to know a lot of the rural people that they're helping out. These people get paid 58 cents a mile. And MAS, the Medicaid dispatch people are, because they're geared towards trying to give it to the least expensive option, which when you're using a taxi driver or even our call and ride buses are not the cheapest. This volunteer process actually works pretty well and it's like Uber with volunteers. So that's kind of the, Stacy's going to be trying to, is writing a grant down to try to bring that here. CCC, the college in Kewa County Community College is writing a grant for the Good News Garage piece that's going to be partnered with City. That actually uses contracts with the people when they give, when they give somebody a power to use, they've got a contract. If they don't, if they stop going to the job or stop going to the education that they're, they're involved with, then that, that ends. But we thought it would be important to kind of give you guys an update because in the end, when we start to modify this, hopefully we're going to be the ones that are, you know, bringing this to the rest of the legislature. And it's, it's a, it's a big deal. It's a big job. The other piece of this is that since we're reframing the poverty reduction in the county, converting from what was the county task force to now we have a funded administrative backbone through OCO to, we're creating a regional poverty collaborative. So we're working, instead of having the lift be separate from the Oswego County Task Force, we're going to have one, try to have one unified common vision for poverty reduction. And the transportation piece falls under that. So having Mel chair the Transportation Advisory Committee that is going to report to this committee, we're going to continue to report back to this committee. I'm trying to get Jim to appoint me to that committee to sit on that because I'm chair of the Collaborative's Transportation Team. We have, the collaborative has eight teams. One is on transportation. Tim and Justin Rudig are heading up economic development. We're doing.
Nate is.
Nate's doing homeless housing piece with Gidget Stevens. And we're, but there's a couple, there's a couple other, health in the community is one. But anyways, there are high level identified areas that can help to move the bar with poverty. And now working across the entire county will hopefully be, hopefully work. And the transportation piece, I've decided to, since I don't have to chair the whole thing anymore, I've decided to really focus in with Mel on the transportation piece and see if we can.
Were you going to be giving more of an update on that at the two o'clock meeting, any chance? Were you planning on that?
Well, since on transportation we report to you.
Right.
I thought it was important that we start to do that.
I was wondering, people have more questions about the expansion that you're talking about, about the other, the other committee pieces of it in general. Would they come separately or would it be, are you going to be updating after the afternoon meeting as well?
What do you mean, the other, the other team?
Yeah, like the other teams that you have the public.
I think we, I think as a general, you know, we would report to the Human Services Committee on the entire collaborative. But, you know, I mean, it's hard. There's so much going on. It's really hard to kind of keep everybody involved. But I figured at least on this piece, that this committee would be important, you know, to update you and, you know, have more people involved, you know, as we go forward.
That's great. Thanks, man.
Yeah, there's, there's so much. There's so much out there for transportation that people are providing, but they're not communicating. And that I think is the biggest issue. We've got it there, but this one's here, this one's there. Oh, I didn't know you were here. So I think once we get this thing all tied together, it's, we're going to do a really good job of it. I'm very pleased.
Thank you, guys. Roy, you have a question?
Yeah, just could you give us an update on the, on the website work?
Yep. We've spent probably the last six weeks working with all departments individually to talk about a really important part of the infrastructure, if you will, of the website. You know, that's referred to as a site map. And that's the wayfinding of information. And we want to make sure that everybody has different needs within their department and their own personal priorities for trying to reach the public. So it really is a like one-on-one, very labor intensive conversation. I'll, we met with you for a couple hours, I think, just on Phil's piece on the administration part. So that is pretty much done and we'll be moving soon to the migration stage where we'll be taking content from our existing website and either throwing it all out and starting fresh or moving pieces of it over to the new website. What we don't wanna do is just take, you need to communicate quickly and efficiently on a website. People don't stay on there forever. It's not a Kindle that they're using when, when they go to find information, they're gonna sit for an hour and read. You need to get your message across quickly. So we'll do some training with folks in the departments about writing for the web, basically. It's not gonna be a full-blown course, but we'll give them a primer on what's, what kind of content is important and how do you format that? So we'll move our content over, then we'll turn it over to the website guys and they'll massage that a little bit. Come back with some drafts. That'll probably take one or two revisions before we get that right. Then we'll also do some training for the staff. We've asked each department to have their own person who will be responsible for minor things like, Julie Smith retires and you need to change it to Jim Brown because he now has that job. Janet and the staff in our department don't have time to be making all those data changes. So we're charging each department with the responsibility of being knowledgeable enough to keep their pages up to date. And then major things that are more technologically involved, we'll take on with our staff or with the website team at our vendor. So that is step after we do migration. And then we'll have a final draft for folks to look at and comment and send it out to all of you as well. And we'll probably have one or two iterations of that draft before we actually launch. But it's, it's moving along pretty well. It's far more complicated than we had anticipated. It's just the site map itself to get everybody on the same page and say, well, I don't think it should look like this. Or why can't I have this drop down? It's, you have to be concise and informative and intuitive in how you design. So that's what we're trying to really nail down is we want people to go there, make it easy for them to find what they're looking for and be able to help them quickly or make it easy for them to figure out how to help themselves quickly. And then also will be, one of the later steps will be the actual functionality of, okay, who needs to be accepting payments or job applications or things like that. We'll tie those modules in. Pretty close to the end is when those things will get folded in.
I just have one question about the city redoing the cars and getting them out to people. Who pays the insurance on this? If the people can't afford, if they're not working and these kids are going to school, who pays for the insurance?
The city, and then it's their vehicles, I would assume.
Um, no, I think they're actually, that, that'll be a good question. I think they're gonna have to have their, their own insurance if they can afford. And so most of these are gonna be geared towards getting people to work, to jobs. I, I don't know if, if, I, I don't know that exactly whether, I think they're trying to actually donate these cars to people. So, you know, I mean, so insurance is there, is there.
Will we have title of the cars?
Pardon me?
Who will have title of the cars?
I think they're gonna have to have the people that they give them to have the title.
Is that what we're doing, the contracts though?
Yeah, so
It may be part of the contract type of, but there's, maybe they hold, maybe they hold the title? Or is it mandatory education or work to obtain and maintain to keep the car?
Yes.
Yes.
By contract, yeah. So I think they wouldn't, they probably wouldn't have the title yet or, you know, they would, they would lean against the title somehow.
Yeah, they're not just gonna hand it and buy.
This is, this is a franchise out of Vermont, it's in multiple places. And so it's a, it's a system. This county's not really, has, does nothing to do with it either. It's all CCC and City. But there's a website, Good News Garage, that you can look at that has the model up there. It's pretty interesting. And, I mean, I, I think they're going ahead with it. So I think it's great because it teaches people how to fix cars and it gets cars to people that need them. If, if, you know, they can fix the cars for those people at an inexpensive price. They have some kind of a contract with them, so hopefully they jump through the legal hoops that make it work.
It would be nice if we had a training facility for healthcare workers because I've been in several nursing homes recently, just talking to people. They are so desperate for, they can't get workers. They cannot get workers. And any shift, they're doing everything they can do. And this is multiple nursing homes.
It's my understanding that that's one of those focus fields that's, the state is actually providing extra funding to the community college to develop more curriculum for, trying to get more people into that system. So they've got some, some specific programs dedicated to that, that, that path of healthcare.
Even nursing, that they will be giving money, four thousand dollars, I think it is, towards nursing because it's We just gotta get them in the mode to work. Well, yeah, that's We need a title to mandatory show up or you have to be trained something. If you don't show up for seven hours a day while you're on the system, you're not gonna get anything. Mass exodus from Illinois.
Yep. There's portions of our system that require that as well. If you're, if I understand it correctly, if you're receiving any kind of cash assistance, there is a work requirement for you to get that.
My neighbor has never worked since she didn't even complete high school. She's never worked, she's had two children, two different guys. She smokes, she goes out to bars and she has never worked a day in her life. She's my daughter's age, who's twenty-nine.
She may, she may not be getting the cash assistance, there's other
Well, she's getting a lot, though.
Yeah, there, there are things that you're eligible for, but there's certain benefits you have to work to get.
Taking care of her while she has multiple other children, I mean, New Jersey put a gap on two. Yeah, she may have had a waiver because I know there's waivers of them getting a job. If some doctor signs off and says she's not mentally or physically capable. I'm just saying, if she, if there are waivers, that there's
We, we have numbers and sixty, sixty percent of the, who apply have exemptions.
Yeah, yeah, it was very striking that when we went to that DSS meeting, striking.
It is encouraging though, the seat programs like Good News Garage, you know, the city of Oswego is tying their rental assistance voucher to, for those who can work to encourage them to work, they get priority seating. Things like that are, are, I think, you know, if you can work, I know we all wanna, it's a whole idea of that hand up, not hand out. How do we, how do we encourage folks to do that? And that might be a discussion more for your meetings after too. So I think we're going, those are the types of things that in my mind, I'd love to see promoted, so.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's a nice time to talk about the stuff that's happening and specifically to what you, you talked about, Marie. CCC has also initiated the Work Ready Community. Our work, we would be the first work-ready county in the state by the time this is done. And with, with some of the programs that they have, that Work Ready Community, it has basically a test and a set of assessments. And the assessments have, you know, portions of it that are, that demonstrate if you succeed on this part of the test, you would fit into this type of job. And the, and employers can take those assessments and actually design a profile for how it looks when they, for these, these assessments. People go through the, it takes, it costs twelve dollars per test, there's three tests. And then there's further ones for specific things. But what they're able to do with this, you know, whole states down south, there's twenty-seven states that are work-ready states. This is through ACT, the same people that do the ACT tests. WorkReadyCommunity dot, WorkReadyCommunities dot the work is their website. But we're going forward with that, we need to enlist fifty-three employers in the county to become part of that. Again, this is through CCC and a grant, a grant from Schimman Foundation. But those, some of those are designed specifically to the healthcare field.
I mean, and the IDA makes a huge difference.
Yes, the IDA put in sixteen thousand dollars.
Well, so that's on my way out. I've had different programs through, or work with some.
Yeah, oh, no, I think it would be really good for, for even small employers because you can, you can take, all you have to do is sign on, you don't have to pay anything, I don't think. But what you, what you do is you basically say, I wanna see the assessment, you know? But take your assessment and you'll have a better shot. Because then you can see the profile of what kind of worker they are. Are they good at, you know, hands-on stuff? Are they good with people? Are they good at, you know, reading diagrams? Are they good at taking, taking notes and, you know, reading comprehension? And so you get a whole profile of a person. And if they score well, they are automatically, gives them a head, a leg up to certain kinds of jobs. Because the employers can look at the profile and see this person is good for this type of job that I have in my business.
But even if they don't score well, you can make a good employer. I mean, my landscaper told me he's desperate for workers, desperate.
And there's a huge, that's the problem right now, is there's a huge number of jobs, but we don't have the workforce that's ready for it. So we're also trying to
Doesn't have much prerequisite, you know?
Well, but has at least a prerequisite of understanding that I gotta show up and I have to be, you know, kind and personable to the
Soft skills are important.
Person that's paying me and, you know, I mean, I have to be aware of some safety considerations.
But they did say at the DSS meeting that they have a lot of people that are really good at getting jobs and they just can't keep them. They are basic soft skills, showing up, being pleasant, listening, following directions. But that should be tied to benefits. If you can't do that, pull it together, sayonara. I'm sorry.
All right, great discussion. Did you have something else?
One thing, one of the reasons I was late today, I apologize, is that I was trying to get this piece of paper, a piece of news copied to share with everybody. And you may have already heard about it, the five-year-old, the eight-year-old, the girls that got lost up in the, in California woods for forty-eight hours. And one of the reasons they survived was because they're training at 4H. That just was like, and I don't know, that just is on repeat. And when she was there with And I thought that was like, that's what it's all about. Oh, they drank water, droves from the leaves and everything. Stayed together.
Sheriffs had some, these girls probably know more about survival than the people that were looking for them.
The eight-year-old started a fire.
Yes, yeah.
Well, obviously she's not walking around with matches in her, in her pockets, obviously she started the fire.
That's my question. He's always prepared.
Yeah, just, they go, summer camping every year with 4H and they learn a lot of those skills, so that's great.
He was really well smoking. She had everything just like
I, uh, have one thing, EJ Manufacturing, I didn't know if Mr. Treddo was gonna be here or not. Mr. Sorbello and Mr. Clay and I were there. Yeah, we're gonna Pardon me?
Open house that they had?
Yes, awesome, were you there?
I heard it was really good, no, I was downtown.
Awesome, and an awesome manufacturing plant. They are looking for, and I really don't know how to say this without discriminating, but they're looking for ambitious youthful people that would be willing to run welders and computer run welders and fabricating machines and stuff. So, you know, I don't know if that would be directed towards City, if anybody, but they're looking for at least six to start. I was blown away because I've been at a lot of manufacturing places where you've got the blue smoke over in the ceilings. And I mean, these are high ceilings that got over the cranes in there, they're all about steel. They backtracked the trailers right in there, all about the steel. It's as clean as it's ever been. There's all the smokes evacuated from that area, taken out, scrubbers outside of the building roughly where we were when we broke the ground at that manufacturing place. But I knew the parent company, I don't, not the parent company now, but Syracuse Casting years ago, was on South Bay Road in Cicero. And I had to laugh because
Nasty, huh? It was nasty.
It was nasty. And what I could say is just the yard that they have there at the new place was about as big as what Syracuse Casting was. I mean, that's how much they've grown. And I had a guy walk up to me, he's from St. Lawrence County. I, in this open house they had, the contractors that helped build the place, they had contractors that had worked with this company. And like I said, this guy from St. Lawrence County came up to me and don't know him. And he said to me, he says, you're one of the legislators in, that helped this? And I said, well, I says, it's economic development and planning. And I says, and I was here during the groundbreaking. He said, well, I thought you were, he said, I've worked with the, the parent company, he says, for a long time, he says, you guys had a home run, so.
That's great, thanks, Paul. That's good to get to know.
Well, and that, that'll be a perfect match for not only this, the Work Ready Communities assessment, but for the Advanced Manufacturing Institute that's getting developed. So, you know, that's exactly what that's gonna be for. Hopefully they're involved, if they're not, I'm assuming we'll be in touch with them, you know, through CCC soon, to let them know that they ought, you know, be participating in that, that businesses are actually putting the equipment into that. That, that facility that's gonna be at Fulton Tool. And the college is renting the space, the businesses are buying the equipment for the advanced manufacturers.
Computerized welding is high demand. Fulton, Fulton Companies has trouble finding those people all the time as well.
But what they, what they were talking to us about was, was they, they didn't want people that have already been out in the workforce trying to retrain them. They want fresh minds. I guess that's all I want for is fresh minds. And to get back to your spin on things, to the other conversation, we sat in, was it a caucus or something? We were talking, Fred Beersley was there.
Yes.
And you remember that? And my, and my direct comment to Fred was, but how do you make these people ambitious? How do you make them get off
Cut the money off.
Well, that's the thing, why, why should I, why should I do this if you're gonna pay me half of that? I could sell.
That's right.
You know, so.
And actually, I don't know how many sat through, but the DSS does do a great presentation about the benefits with the idea of, at what point does it not make sense and how do you combat that? And there's, there's some tax benefits and things like that that they're working with to try and encourage folks like that. And, you know, also there's some issues we have with the state we live in. I mean, there are certain things that are mandated that we, you don't like it, but that's the way it is, so.
We give way the F mandate, I've reviewed it extensively, so.
So, of course, it's not gonna help trying to get people ambitious if we're gonna turn on, have people all smoking pot, so.
They're smoking it in.
All right, so anything else for this committee? Roy?
Dave, there've been a little bit of discussion sort of behind the scenes about potentially moving housing out of your department and to report to, somehow report to Human Services, just because we have that housing piece now on our poverty collaborative. Is it, what, what, what do we need to do to have that, some, something happen on that front? To have more, to hear more about what Section Eight is doing here in Oswego County?
Well, there's different types of housing. So Social Services has different funding sources than, than we have. And their, their housing is more like emergency and homeless type of situations. And ours is a contract with the state who has a contract with HUD. And we administer vouchers for that. Ours are about forty percent seniors. A lot of folks who qualify as disabled. And then you have your other category of single moms and dads and but we, we have four hundred and eighty-eight vouchers that we administer with the four people down there. And well, three right now, trying to get four. There isn't a lot to talk about except, you know, we're taking care of those folks and
Well, I mean, just even to get a report on those numbers, I don't ever remember getting any kind of, I mean, you seem to have some of the numbers right off the top of your head. But, you know, just to somehow be able to have, you know, that, that, those kinds of numbers on, you know, you know, what, what kind of people are getting it? How many, you know, how many people are getting it? Where are the people that are getting it?
So, Roy, your point is more not essentially moving it out of your oversight, more to
No, not moving out of the oversight.
At the table during the Human Services Committee.
Just to have a more up-to-date idea of, you know, what's going on with it.
Right. So City of Oswego and City of Fulton each have similar programs, except that theirs are directly through HUD. And they have to except that theirs, um, are directly through HUD and they have to compete, uh, for those funds. And they have their own administration plans that allows them a little bit more flexibility to, um, provide some different guidelines, um, than we do. We, we have to go by the state plan who has a contract with HUD. And we're a subcontractor to the state. So, um, when someone comes into our office and says, you know, I'm wondering if I'm eligible for housing assistance, we say, well, do you have an idea about where you're thinking about living? And if they say City of Fulton, then we refer them to Fulton. We, we try to stay out of the two cities. And we try to take, save our vouchers for people who are gonna be living in places other than the two cities because they have their own program. If you came in today and, um, we said, we determined that you were eligible, um, we'd put you on a waiting list. Right now, it could be up to two years before we call you back and say, um, we think we have a voucher available for you. So the demand is far greater than the customers, but we're limited to a specific number of vouchers that the state has allocated to us.
So you have a waiting list right now?
Yeah, in the city, both cities have waiting lists, yeah.
Who, and, um, does the, does, uh, DSS refer to you clients or do they just, how do they find out about this?
There's not really a big media campaign about, you know, this is where you come if you need housing assistance.
Don't bring it, let it go like this.
We have so many people that need it, um, it's not, it's, it doesn't make sense to advertise it because we can't help them anyways at this point.
Okay, well, but, um, so how do they qualify? They're, you qualify them here at this office or does that happen through DSS or?
Well, there's guidelines, um, that were given by the state because again, we're a subcontractor for them, operating under their plan. And the bulk of those are, um, requirements that HUD has. So, um, family size, income, um, disabled, age, um, there's, there's a number of criteria. And if you're eligible, then go on the list and, and hope that someday, uh, there'll be some housing assistance for you. Most people, um, when they find out it's a couple of years, they go on someplace else or they become homeless.
And then we see them at DSS.
Then they see them at DSS.
So we have four eighty, four hundred and eighty-eight vouchers out there, how long do they, how long do they last? They have to renew them every year? Do they have to?
They have to, uh, go through a recertification process and, yeah.
And does that somehow check records for if they're working again or not, or how much?
Yeah, they have to provide, uh, documentation about, uh, income and people in the household and things like that.
And those rules are set by the state though, for you, right?
Yes.
New York City's a ten-year voucher wait to get a place.
You did, you couldn't, you couldn't change, similar with the city did because of the way you're mandated, you couldn't change your admin plan the way the city did to require work or voucher.
You mean, they-
Well, let me ask, answer Tim's question.
Just because I think that's an important question from what Marie had said earlier.
Yeah, so no, we're, um, when the, when you apply, when the city applies, they have an admin plan and they send that to HUD and if HUD finds it acceptable, then, uh, they'll fund you again for your program. We don't have that luxury. We, we're given the plan and we're asked to administer it on behalf of the state. Which by the way, it costs the county nothing. It's, uh, net revenue actually, uh, in that department. So, um, we do have a little bit of flexibility, for example, uh, to kind of support Mayor Barlow's initiative. What we asked the state for permission was if there's a requirement in municipality that says you have to have a rental permit issued by that municipality, we'd like to say to our clients, you need to find a unit. Because we don't tell them where to go, they have to go find their own housing and then we expect it to make sure it meets a criteria. So we'll tell, uh, we got permission to say to our clients, if you're gonna live in the city of Oswego and City of Fulton, where a rental permit is required, you must be in a unit that has a, uh,
Correct.
rental permit. So that ensures a little bit higher standard of housing, uh, for those folks, but we can't-
That's limited in the city of Oswego.
We can't do that where there's no permits required. We can't set the housing quality standards. Uh, they are being revised by HUD, uh, whether they be out this year or next year. Uh, there are gonna be more strict, uh, housing quality standards, um, that everybody will have to comply with. But I mentioned the release date for that, yeah.
But as far as the work, the work requirements that the city has, you could not, my understanding is add that to your requirement for the county? Is that a fair statement?
Yes. So Section Eight has two different programs. One is called, um, tenant-based, which is these individual vouchers.
Right.
And you could get a voucher in Idaho.
Right.
And move to Florida and they would have to honor it there. Once you have that voucher, as long as you're still eligible, you made all the criteria, that voucher travels with you.
If there's available space.
No, you have to absorb them into your program because they, they come with a voucher, yeah. They're not asking to be granted one. And then there's project-based, which might be what you're talking about for Constancia. You're familiar with the, um, senior housing in Minneto? That's Section Eight. And we actually administer that, that unit, um.
Been very successful.
Yeah.
It's all seniors.
The housing right here, uh, the little tower on the river, um,
Simian Duett.
Simian Duett was Section Eight until just recently. Um, it was a tenant or, uh, project-based housing. The term for that expired. And now the people who remained were given individual vouchers by HUD. And, um, they can go wherever they want with those. But now the other units, when someone moves out who wasn't receiving housing assistance, that's now market-based housing, so.
Yeah. There's a waiting list always.
There's a waiting list always. So Constancia getting Section Eight might be a project, like Simian Duett or the Minneto Housing.
It's good to hear more about that, I don't know anything about it, so.
You know, I don't remember, I just heard it in conversation. There's several areas where things are going on around.
Yeah, um, Os- uh, Swoop County Opportunities has a project on Carson Drive on City Line Road that is, um, for seniors and disabled folks.
Yeah, everybody at Carson Drive wants to sell their house and move immediately. Cut the whole tree line down, it's quite a deal. Low-level sex offenders can live there.
They can live anywhere, they could live across the street from you right now.
They would, they bought everything around.
All right, anything else?
It's a way to do it, well, that's what I did.
Steve, so do we get, uh, reimbursement for our staff?
We get, uh, an admin fee for running the program. And yes, it's a hundred percent valid. The staff, four people in that office and the expenses of running the office are one hundred percent covered by our admin fees. And then as I said, it's actually a net revenue, uh, office. We get more in admin fees than it costs to run the program.
Could, at some point, if we could get just, um, stats on, you know, kind of a breakdown, who's on there? How many, you know, the four hundred and eighty-eight vouchers, what, what kind of people are on there? How, how long do, um, vouchers last?
Well, the vouchers last until they're no longer eligible. So that really is not a good way to give you that information because if all of them got jobs tomorrow, their voucher is gone. If their job put them above the income qualifying.
She'll go over to the HUD office, talk to the girls, they're awesome. Yeah, right down in the city, right in, she'll walk you through the whole process, show you proudly how many-
Down one floor and go see them right here?
Yeah.
We're, they're, they're happy to talk to you, but, um, you know, what kind of stats do you want? We can get it for you.
It's under, it's under the jurisdiction of our committee, so I thought it would be important to ask some of these questions.
Sure.
Yeah.
No reason not to ask, just if you want more information, we, you know, downstairs.
Specifically, you wanna know what, how many seniors, how many veterans, how many disabled?
Not just, I mean, whatever, however you break it down and keep track, whatever, if you, you'll report once in a while, so.
Or we could even make an agenda even honestly and, and to have, you know, discussion about that topic. It would be a better idea to, it would give Dave some time to prepare whatever you have for.
I mean, we're not, they're not things that we're asked to track for, um, our service contracts. But, I mean, we, we know things about the folks. Like I can tell you, there's X number that are, what, they'd be considered seniors, but, you know, it's kind of-
Well, then maybe whatever you, you report to them that you can report to us would be good to see.
Yeah, maybe, and maybe geographic, I kinda like to have a little scatter plot, if that's something you guys could do and just to kind of give an idea, maybe to the legislators.
There's only four hundred and eighty, it would just be a list.
What's that?
It'd be a plot.
Well, no, they kind of need to see, I think, just to-
See where they're at.
Yeah, see where they're at. Let me help with DSS too.
Well, we can tell you numbers by municipality. I don't know that we legally can say this house has a family that's being-
No, yeah, I mean, there's some-
Simple basically, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm not actually breaking rules, okay.
We're allowed to go to each of their houses, so if you could provide, you know.
Yeah, address.
Thank you, Ron. All right, anything else? We're all good?
All right.
Look for the appropriate.
Those are the adjournments.
Second, all the way over. Thank you, guys.